Okay, cool. Okay. So before we begin, I would like to ask the Deputy Town Manager to briefs and announce the protocols for the meeting.
Hello, as you may have heard from the announcement, this meeting is being recorded so residents can follow along and will have access to the meeting, which will be posted on the town's YouTube channel and website. Providing some captioning for people to follow along that way. The meeting is set up for residents to be able to chat directly with me, so if you have a question, please send me a message through Zoom. In addition to the opportunity for resident comments at the start of the meeting, several items on the agenda are listed as public meetings, which indicates that an opportunity will be given to public comments prior to any council action. If you would like to make a comment, please send me a message on Zoom or indicate that you would like to speak using the raise hand function as we will call on you at the appropriate time. If you do make a comment, please make sure to state your name for record and the street that you live on, if you are a resident, or the organization or community that you represent, if you are not a resident. To make it easier for those watching to follow along, we asked that videos be turned off if you're not engaged in the council meeting discussion. I may also turn off your video, but we'll invite you to turn it back on if you're making a comment during a public here. Finally, if this meeting is interrupted in a way that does not allow us to continue with the council's discussions, we will end the meeting and send out a new link via constant contact to restart the meeting so the council can continue with their business. Thank you.
Thank you. We will begin with our public comment area, so if any resident or guest who's on Zoom or in here, we'd like to speak. Please let the Deputy Town Manager now see you. Is there anybody else to see? Okay. Okay, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve? We approve the agenda. And I see, because I know I can hear it, hearing that all this in favor of all of us. Next item is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Move the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Right. Yeah. As I've been hearing that all this in favor of my province of the state. Okay, the next item is a public hearing to consider approval of building permit application submitted by Alex Edinger and Jonathan Urban for the construction of a rear yard deck at the property located at 5409 Surrey Street. So we will begin. This is a hearing for the Somerset Council for Permit Application Number 239 D R 1 R A to consider approval of a demolition and building permit application submitted by Alex Edinger, excuse me, Jonathan Urban, the removal of a flax sole patio and construction of a rear yard deck on the property located at 5409 Surrey Street. The hearing will observe the following order. First, the Somerset Town staff will present their findings and submit to the record a report of the application under consideration. Next, the applicant and the representatives will present their application or comment on the report. The next, next, the Somerset Town Council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff relevant to the application. The council should introduce all findings and factoring, their comments or questions. Next, other interested parties, including town residents, will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff only, or make comments to the council applicant or staff. Next, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony. After which, the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the record closed. No new information shall be considered or submitted for the record, for the record after this point. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings, the fact, and conclusions. The council may make a motion on a permanent decision. So please indicate. Let's see, I'll give you the script. He added something here. Okay, we will begin this hearing with the presentation of the staff findings reports. Mr. Deputy Town Manager.
Yes, this was, this report was prepared by the Town Manager before the meeting. He wrote to provide an assessment of the permit application submitted by the applicants for the proposed construction project of 5409 Surrey Street. He outlined six aspects of the project. Side foot back, side foot back after initial review and consultation with town staff. The applicant relocated side yard stairs to the rear of the property, ensuring compliance with the town's side setback requirements. All building structures are within the town's setback requirements with a minimum of eight feet on one side and eighteen feet overall. The town project maintains a nine-foot setback on one side and nineteen feet overall in the community, meeting the town co-specifications. Number two, rear setbacks. All structures proposed to this project are comfortably within the town's twenty-foot rear setback requirements. The proposed structure position thirty-four point four feet from the rear yard line. Three, stormwater management. The project does not trigger the need for stormwater management measures as it did not increase impervious surfaces by one hundred and fifty feet or more. Additionally, the proposed deck is constructed of wood, allowing water to seep through and therefore not considered impervious surface. In fact, the proposed plan will reduce impervious surface on the property. The, the staff and the council agreed on the interpretation that wood decks do not count towards impervious surfaces when reviewing a previous application in July at forty-seven sixteen Essex Avenue. For application process, the applicant submitted a complete application within the required timeframe for placement on the council meeting agenda. Maintaining interest for neighbors and beginning plans were provided. By parking, adequate parking has been provided through a combination of onsite parking and street parking. In six street preservation, no trees are slated for removal and the town arborists do not recommend any removals. The town arborist has assessed the plans and provided chief protection recommendations. Furthermore, while the town code does not currently impose building coverage requirements, the proposed plan does not increase building coverage in the range of county regulations. Given the project's compliance with town code requirements, staff recommends approval of the permit application submitted for the construction of a rear yard deck at fifty-four oh nine Surrey Street.
Does that conclude your report? Yes. Okay, thank you. So now the applicants have the opportunity to, you could come forward and remember to identify yourself and then you, you have the opportunity to present the application. If it was clear, you can also comment on the report and, and be prepared and then be prepared to answer questions.
I'll do my best.
Thank you for joining us tonight.
I'm Jonathan Urban. I'm here with Alexis Edinger. And we are proposing a rear deck at fifty-four oh nine Surrey Street. I think we heard a little bit of the summary. That I think it's going to be a nice deck. It is in the rear of the house and as mentioned, for those who are passionate about it, it does reduce the amount of impervious structure on our property, but besides that, I think there are no variances we've requested or anything that is outside what is allowed or affected.
That concludes your. Thank you.
I'm happy to go anywhere.
That is perfect. Counsel, President, Sir, do you have any questions?
So it looks very nice. I have one question for Doug. If our town engineer is on the line. He. Let's see Doug. Yeah, sorry. Great. I said one question about the wall behind the jacuzzi. As I recall, I was trying to look it up and find it. There are, there are some building regulations that pertain to additional walls that are constructed in like, there's a ratio between how far they are from the property line and how tall they're allowed to be. And I just wanted to know if you could clarify what that regulation is and confirm that this is conforming to code.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not sure what regulation you're referring to. The code says they can't have walls in the front yard except retaining walls. But these are pretty much walls used for seating around the deck. And they're not encroaching into any of the side yard setbacks. So. Does that help?
Yep, thank you. Just want to double check.
Okay.
No other questions? Okay, thank you. Counselor, do you have any questions?
No questions. Remember, Helen.
No question.
Yes, very good. I have two questions for the town staff. You get signatures on residents. I see that in the packet. Yes. That all neighbors were involved. And then again, confirm for the record that no trees are being cut. For the movement. Thank you. No more questions.
Thank you, Counselor. Write back to any questions.
No questions.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions? Is there any mention or asking? Okay, okay, so with that, we will. This concludes the public question of the hearing. The record is now closed. The council, the town, assess and deliberate on findings, effect, and conclusions of the law and a vote on the application. Then we'll turn it over to the Council President to lead the deliberation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It looks like a very nice plan. I don't have any concerns. Just go around. Is there any concerns or comments that folks have brought in?
No, I didn't. I mean, I see all sorts of it. Settler just provided tree protection plan, which is to fence off the trees.
I think it looks pretty straightforward and easy and not much to discuss, actually.
Yep. Good job.
Same.
Okay. Well, then I'll make a. I can make a question. But the council approved the building permit application submitted by Alexis Edinger and Jonathan Urban for the construction of a rear yard deck at the property located at fifty-four zero nine Surrey Street. Second.
Then we have the condition that they follow the tree protection plan as described by our arborist.
Absolutely, that's a friendly amendment. I sort of assumed that was a given, but maybe should.
Let's wait it before anybody seconds, because I think I think it's second. Mr. Town Attorney, is the motion the way to take this issue?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
And do you recommend the addition that Council Bar?
Of the tree protection plan, yes. I'm just checking the code. I believe the code.
You're okay. And you're second. Okay, thank you. Is there discussion? Hearing that all this in favor? I, all of us of us. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you for joining us tonight. The next item is our building administrators' report. Sir.
Yeah, a few items to go over this evening. At forty-five fifteen Cumberland, parking planning has completed their review and they've required that some of the stormwater management's proposed stormwater management features be relocated to protect some of the trees in the rear of the lot. Plans had been revised and resubmitted to the county for review. And the architect and the engineer will be submitting revised plans to us showing the changes that were made for parking plant. At forty-five fifteen Dorset, the property owners have submitted an application to construct a detached two-car garage at the rear of the house. The council approved the application on August seventh and the town has issued its building permit. At forty-five twenty-four Dorset, that building permit will expire in January. According to the applicant, all of the work has been completed and the county has signed off on the building permit. A couple of the items that were included in the variance, he has stated that he's run out of money, so he's not going to install those items. And we'll be releasing the building permit in a week or so. At farther down on Fallstone, I incorrectly labeled it forty-nine oh four. It's forty-nine oh six. And at forty-eight oh six Grantham, that building permit was issued in July, but work has not begun yet. At fifty-five oh two Grantham, a gray stone. The council extended the building permit to October first. The applicant stated that the exterior work has been completed and the only remaining work is the installation of a new gas stove. And that DPS permit is still open. At fifty-five twenty-two Graystone, that permit expires on October ninth. And that permit is also open, and I believe Matt has been talking to the property owner about whether they need an extension or not. I haven't heard. At fifty-five twenty-eight Trent, council issued on September eleventh, the council approved that application and stormwater management plans have been sent to the county with the revisions required by the council. And at fifty-six thirteen Warwick, that permit expires on October thirteenth. The applicant originally submitted an application to extend the permit and to build a deck at the rear of the house. We've contacted the applicant a couple of times and not received any reply from them. And the county permit expired in July. So if we haven't heard from them by October, we're assuming that permit has been closed and they're not going to be applying for an extension or for the deck permit at this time. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Counsel President, Sir, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you, Doug.
Counselor Bar.
No, thanks, Doug. I have no questions. Counselor Helen. I do have a question. I'm just not, I need to. Sorry, I was trying to find.
Take your time.
The Rosenfeld House on Surrey. Is that in here? Is that one of these?
Is that one that's a dumpster?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't see it on the the list, but I just talked about it.
Because my question about that house, and maybe Doug knows, is do they need permits to do anything they're doing? Are they just doing internal stuff and you don't need a permit? Doug, do you need a permit to?
What?
No.
What's the address on Surrey?
Um, I can't find it in here. Which is.
The. It's, it's this, perhaps, perhaps it's Surrey and Warwick. Was it very?
No, Surrey.
It's very, it's very, sorry. Yeah.
Yeah, and it's, I'll tell you the number in a second. It's it's right next door to Pinklestein. So it'd be fifty-five twenty-nine. That's what it would be. Fifty-five twenty-nine. You've got the, it says property submitted application to have a new deck to the, where the existing house. But they are taking that house apart on the inside bit by bit. I wondered if they needed a permit to do that.
Excellent.
Doug.
They don't need a permit from us to do any demolition in, on the interior. They did need a permit and they've obtained a permit for the dumpster that's in the driveway. And that permit is pending with us and with the county.
Okay, I just, I've been wondering about that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, my only question.
Thank you, Counselor Kumar. No question. Counselor, write back.
So for that fifty-five twenty-nine Surrey Street, so do, has the permit been approved for the dumpster?
Yes, they applied for a permit for dumpster. They paid the fee and we issued the permit.
Okay. I have a question about four eight one five Cumberland. So it says that the engineer stated that the staff at MNCP and PC require the stormwater management plans to be revised to protect the trees at the rear of the lot. On. So have we reseen those stormwater management plans yet, or we haven't seen that yet?
I guess six months ago, they submitted the original plans and Bayland reviewed them. But those are the plans that have been since revised and we haven't received revised plans yet. So it will have to go to Bayland once we get them.
Do we know if there, I mean, so I mean, they would have until, I guess, the fifteenth of this month, or I don't, I'm not sure if we officially changed it earlier in order to be a part of the council meeting for November. Right?
Well, they've already submitted, they've already submitted an application, but it's the application is not complete yet, so if they make it in by the fifteenth and everything is in order, they can possibly make the November agenda.
Okay, but we don't really know where, if, if that would happen as of yet.
No, not till we see the plans and then Bayland would also have to review the plans before it can be scheduled.
Okay, okay, all right. I just, there's a lot, there was a lot of people that had, had been inquiring about that house, so I just want to make sure that, you know, we, we get out the information that we have to people if we get, you know, if we get the revised plans for Matt to send out, so that's it.
Once we get the revised, once we get the revised plans, they will have to send out another notice to the adjacent residents with the revised plans.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, that's it.
Okay, thank you. We will now move to public hearing motion to consider approval. It's not sitting here. To consider approval of a three removal permit submitted by Stephen Serco and Elizabeth Thompson for the removal of a silver maple tree. Mr. Deputy Town Manager.
Town Arborist looked at the tree in question and found significant hollows in the main trunk, main trunks and major branches. He considers it tree hazardous and recommends.
Okay, thank you. I, and I will, since you have indicated you wish to rehearse yourself, I will move to Council Number Bar.
All right. So anybody, any comments? Let's see.
No, no, you have to.
Oh, it's a hearing.
You go first.
You go first, because you refuse them.
Okay, all right. I have no questions. Okay, thank you, Counselor Helen.
I have no question.
Counselor. I have a question.
Counselor, write back.
I do have.
Oh, you, I'm sorry. I just wanted to clarify, does this fall under,
do we need to do a tree replacement here? Where does this fit with the tree code? That we have there. Sorry, this is a complicated question, but.
I guess the arborist is. I mean, arborist hasn't recommended replacements. Let me review the code, Mr. Mayor. And maybe you guys in the circle, you probably know.
I've gotten a little confused with the new code, with the inches of diameter, the change of the removal process, but regardless of that, in anticipation that we can use to take this tree down, I worked at the Tree Montgomery program. We planted two canopy trees in our summer. In the spring.
Okay.
To. So we can continue that canopy coverage. We love the trees. It's just this one tree.
You, you don't want another tree in that location, but too close.
Right, you do not want these.
Yeah, I'm just curious. Like, I'm just trying to remember. I don't remember the code on that specific issue, so I apologize, which is very.
Yeah, I think, I did say that. Now, right now.
I mean, it's.
It's forty-one inches base. I think it requires council approval. I'm not sure if it.
Right, it doesn't.
That's the code.
Okay.
And all this tree.
I don't think. Requires, like, I remember.
So section one eight two hyphen eight F says replanting. The mayor or town council, as the case may be, may impose replanting as a condition of permanent approval. So it's discretionary.
And, and what is the limit that the stewardship requires in terms of the size?
Yes.
To do it open, sorry. That's, I know it's in the twenties. Yeah.
Yes. Four inches or more measured in diameter at four and a half feet of the ground. That requires.
Twenty-four inches or more.
Four inches.
So, yeah, right, that, that requires a permit, but for a council review, it's twenty-four inches.
Right?
Yeah.
Can you check that? Yes.
Sorry.
No.
The reason to. And the process.
Twenty-four inches. Okay, so. Twenty-four inches or less, the mayor reviews. Twenty-five inches or more, the council reviews.
And then it's up to the council's discretion about tree planting. Additionally, you're saying you did it too. But you planted the tenant throughout this year, this spring. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
You have a question. No other question. Counselor, write back. Do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Town Manager. Is any resident or guest indicating they wish to speak? Okay, with that, are you ready to make a motion?
Yep.
Motion to approve the removal permit submitted by Stephen Serco and Elizabeth Thompson
for removal of silver maple tree at Redman and Town Arborist.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, I'll refer. Is there discussion? Hearing that all this in favor.
All right.
All this, I see, I see. Just wanted to stay. Okay, thank you. The next item, public hearing motion to consider the adoption of a regulation establishing a Somerset Youth Council power program for the period of January twenty twenty four to May twenty twenty four. Mr. Deputy Town Manager.
Yes, so this resolution is, takes the verbiage from the previous proposal at the work session and turns it into a resolution to begin implementing this power program.
Okay, thank you. Counselor President, Sir, do you have any questions?
No questions. How did you find it through forums? Counselor Bar.
What, I mean, it's the two things that are highlighted. Are we going to inquire that to be registered to vote in order to participate in council? And do we want them in our GPA? I know all the children in Somerset are above average, but nevertheless, should we?
When you're asking, there's your time to ask the town manager through parade and this. You can debate it later.
Oh, what's your recommendation then?
My, the staff's opinion was that at the last work session, it seemed that the council was in favor of not having a GPA requirement and not having to be registered.
Well, I heard one council member saying that only, so I wanted to make sure that all, how about the other council members? Move on.
Sorry, what's your question?
Well, well, the issue is, do we want?
Okay, Rob, right now, it's your opportunity to ask the staff about this. Then when you're debating it, whether you're going to approve it, then you can discuss it. Okay, sorry, well, that, so. So do you have any other questions? No more questions. Thank you, Counselor Helen.
No, I can't.
I can open.
I can't open. Can't get anything open. I did book this stuff this afternoon, but I forgot to zero in on those things on late. But of the things that we talked about, I just want, I can't get, I can't even get it on my, my own. But I think it's fine, you know, the way it is.
Okay, well, let me go around to see if your questions, they're coming back again, once you let me know when it's fixed. Counselor Kumar, do you have a question?
Yes, PJ, so I have the same question. At the working session, we have, we have discussed the appointment process. While you're looking at, are you cool with going there? So we actually, we have, you know, looked at the appointment process. We had said, you know, we probably don't need registered to vote and we probably don't need the GPA. And then we talked about maybe asking them to submit, you know, part of doing an application, either they submit an essay or they go through an application process. I was wondering what the staff thought of that feedback from the council. Because I do see those criteria still in the, in the proposed resolution. And does it matter that it's in the proposed resolution? Got question wrong. As it could be, you know, we can approve it now, but still come back and change the criteria.
Sure, just take a new motion. That's it.
Okay. Those are my questions. Sorry, just, all right. To, to both, to PJ and then. Was any of the other counselors, do I need to send it to any of the other counselors?
Oh, I can't.
We can't, we can't open any of the stuff for some reason. I was able to open it. The staff were moving through everything, but.
I guess. Except for this file, but I saw it on.
Counselor, write back. Can you open yours?
I can.
Okay. Yeah.
Is it faulty? You know, women, they've been provided.
No.
You can pay your property.
Kind of rigged the system, guy.
You can get it on. And you can't get it on.
Can't open file would be a novel reason for a resolution.
I've seen enough of it that I have to try and send it now. Rely on.
No, we have, I think, so right now, Counselor. So what's your question? You have heard a question.
My question was, at the council work session, we proposed changes to the appointment process. And I think we were, I, I was on, on, on the phone, so I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think we were charging agreement that we won't require GPA and we won't require even registering to vote.
Yeah.
I remember that. And then we had said, why not an essay or something that kind of reflects their vision for why they want to be on the council or a question, Q and A. I remember that being proposed to the staff, so I'm. Pro, I remember that being proposed to the staff, so I'm wondering why. That is not reflected in this draft, and what's the, so, what's your thinking on that?
Uh, the decision was made to, it was thought that. Those specific requirements don't need to be in the resolution, but can still be applied. And so, uh, they can be. Discussed afterwards to decide these requirements for the, uh. Well, it doesn't need to be included in the resolution itself.
I agree. And maybe the town, do you want? I, I would agree, the written summary doesn't need to be in the resolution, because the resolution does say they must complete an application. Prepared by the facilitator, so that application can include requirements for the submittal.
Which we can decide out of the panel leaders.
Yes.
Okay.
Fine. Anyone, okay, cancer wrote back, do you have any questions?
No, but I don't really think that we should require a certain GPA.
I, I.
We took that top example.
That, okay, you'll, you'll talk about that, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Deputy Town Manager, is any resident or guest? Any who wish to speak. Uh, no, yeah, no. Okay, thank you. So at this point, I will turn it over to the state, this council president, so we can even discuss it. Because I know you're all salivating.
Wow. But, I, I, I'm actually very excited about this, this is the, uh, a thought that we've. Been considering. Um. In one form or another for, for over a year in terms of. Increase engagement with the youth in our town. I think it's a great idea, and. As we've demonstrated in other areas, we have the. Capacity to, to modify and improve things as, as we go, so I'm. I'm very comfortable accepting this as is, and if we need to adjust or provide. Additional guidance moving forward, that's fine. That's, that's my thought.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, 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 I'm hankering for saying that they should be registered to vote, I mean, if, if they're interested in civics, then really, that's the minimum. Standard of being interested in civics, being registered to vote. I'd want to see that, if they're eligible, of course, someone, they only sixteen. Um.
You know, it'd be USC.
The, oh, well, that's also true, well, actually, you don't have to be.
That's true.
Um, the, the. Point about the essay, the only advice I'm going to give is put a word limit on it, like five hundred words and no more, otherwise you couldn't get screened, so. Just from that.
Thank you.
Former professor, tell me that.
Yeah. What is sweet. Thank you. Okay.
Um. I don't agree that we should, they have to be registered to vote. My guess is, if they want to get involved civically like this. They'll end up, they'll probably end up, um, then, then, then doing that. And I think this, this group is, is a nurturing group and a learning group. So I wouldn't, I would not say you have to, you have to register to vote. Um, I think it's fine to give, that they should write a paragraph or two of why they want to do this. To make sure that it's just because I want students to service learning hours. You know, that they, they're interested in civic engagement, so that's how I stand, other than that, I think everything is, everything is fine.
And, and we're not going to have the details of that application.
Until later.
Until when you're ready.
Hello.
I'm sorry. Is it me? Yes. Is, is the, the public?
Well, yeah.
Again, do you want to talk to them?
I'm sorry.
Then we have, okay, keep. I, I think, uh, you know, I'm finding a way, but I don't say what you were saying. I think we want to make it easier for all of us to participate, so I did, I'm at a high level in my framework on this. Uh, uh, question I have for the council, this will be a pilot program. If, under what condition would we consider this successful? What would success look like for us? I, I, I'm not asking this. I, I'm curious, it's not like, I, I haven't thought through it, what would be successful? You know, that we have in our participation, recording meetings, like, what would? What would we consider success, because? That would be the question in front of us, uh, for a period of time, whether we continue the program.
I don't think we can measure, I don't think we can put that on the table, we all might see it a little differently. Some people say, wow, we got two really engaged kids. You know, we, we won, we hit, we hit the lottery here, but, um. I, I think we have to. Get the program going, we have to build it, and while we're doing that, I think we'll be able to measure for ourselves what's success. Maybe it's not worth it. You know, uh, you know, maybe we'll get to the point of, why are we doing this, nobody's really involved or whatever, or maybe it's so successful, we really nurtured. Kids' involvement, so I don't think we can, can answer that question yet.
Well, my two cents on that, maybe to the staff is. Some programs like this may just take time to gather momentum, so we should just be patient. With it, and maybe there's some benchmark. Or elsewhere. Like at the Amer- state level, what they have done, like how programs like this have gathered momentum and popularity over time. Because maybe in the initial year, there's a loop on, as far as, but in year two, you do better, and year three, it's really flourish, and so. Just wanted to put that in front of us, not just patient.
I guess, great idea for. To try and the, the town staff. Assess that, monitor it, support it. Um, I think we, we could ask. This to be a. Like a regular part of the town administration, for the town staff, so just. Have a brief update, did they meet that month or not, what? What did they discuss, short and sweet, but. Just be less important.
Let's see what works. I just, um, I, I want to thank EJ for his dedication to this and really putting it together, so thank you. We appreciate it.
Well said, thank you.
So.
Uh, no, I agree with what you guys all just said.
So is anyone prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, I, I make a motion.
Just you.
To approve, to approve, I make a motion to approve the resolution that. To what? With docs. Okay. Making a mo- motion to adopt the resolution to establish. Um. What are we establishing? Um, if someone says, uh, council pilot program. For the period of January. Twenty twenty four through May twenty twenty four.
So, do you think to amend, you got, you have. This is just a question of it before we second it, if you want to amend it to take away from the home GPA and the registered vote.
It's not in the.
Okay. Right, okay, so it's literally a technical decision, is there a second, uh, stop, you second, is there a discussion? Very now, I'll listen favor. I, I'll just say. Next item. To consider introduction of a resolution establishing support for state legislation. That authorizes the use of stop sign monitoring systems in municipalities, Mr. Deputy Town Manager.
Uh, yes, this was the, this was discussed at the last work session. Uh, with, and I believe that at that meeting, it was thought that it would be. Introduced at this meeting to allow further, further discussion on the matter between the council.
Okay, thank you. President, sir, do you have any questions? Um. No. Remember, this is just the introduction. Right, this is just introduction, it's really not. Right. Council member bar, give any questions? Uh, no, no questions. I'm sorry, Hall.
No questions.
Can I sort of come on? Um. No questions. Can I sort of run that?
Uh, no questions.
Are you prepared to make a motion? I introduce those. I move that we approve, um, introducing the resolution to establish support for state legislation that authorizes use of stop sign monitoring systems and also authorizes town officials. Do issue citations. Is there a second? All this is better. Okay, that's so introduced, so. So I think you say at this point, we decide, uh, who would like to write, um. An article. Yeah, or the staff can.
Robin really should, he's on the traffic committee. Elizabeth might want to, you know. Work with mine.
Okay, thank you. Next item, to consider introduction of a credit amendment clarifying stormwater drainage requirements. And requiring a permit for driveway installation, Mr. Deputy Town Manager.
This is also, this was also legislation briefly discussed, or I. At the last work session. Uh, been brought for the council to introduce it.
And Mr. Mayor, I would just add, the council members will note there are two versions. In the packet, one is the version that was originally drafted. At the work session, the second version makes a slight change on the last page in response to comments at the work session. Which would provide that. If a driveway. Once constructed. Has a five percent or more slope as a result of a change in geography during the project. Then the applicant would need to retain. From the driveway, the amount of stormwater runoff that would have been captured. At pre-construction grade if permeable materials have been used. So option one says you need a variance, option two says. You've got to engineer. Retention of what you would have captured if the driveway was not increased in size.
So, so are you recommend.
Side of our package, I don't know what that. This was not in the pack. It skips from six to eight, this should be number seven.
Oh, wow, I'm, I'm, well.
No problem.
I'm looking at the. Council packet that Matt sent me. You're lucky.
It's just like, I've got loaded up.
Yeah, I thought I, I, yeah, it's not here.
Oh.
I had it the other day.
Okay, so.
But, but, so thank you for walking us through, I mean, we discussed it all. Well, I, I'd like to see the, the documentary.
Mr. Attorney, can you recommend a, that the council introduces this. Advised. Amendment. So, Mr. Mayor, I don't have a recommendation on option one or two. I think. I think where the council was probably leaning after the work session was version two. It's, version one would create an administrative burden, because you'd be setting up more variance hearings potentially. So option two would avoid that, because. I just may.
And always request a variance, but we can't do that.
Okay, so why don't I, why don't I, uh, read through the council to ask questions? And I could read the exact text of version two, if that would help, Mr. Mayor.
Why don't you do that?
I'm also putting, emailing it to all the others.
Okay, so you all have seen.
That I have an integrated access. Problem.
Why don't we have a town attorney? Clarify. Ninja restaurants. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so everyone saw. At the work session, version one. Which provided that a waiver was required, as they said, if the. Slope of the driveway was altered because of a construction project, so instead of that waiver language. Yes, sir. So instead of that waiver language, version two provides. If proposed construction involves alteration of the pre-construction slope. Such that the post-construction slope is five percent or more. And permeable materials are not used. The volume of stormwater runoff from the driveway that would have been captured and treated. At pre-destruction grade, if permeable materials would have been used, must be captured and treated in accordance. With section one twelve dash fourteen, D four, A one and two, which is our tiering. So technically, they could introduce, but. That's right, Mr. Ware. I mean, and then, and then, so. So, we're grateful that our town attorney said so much work and our staff of this. Council residents, like, again, the questions.
Thank you very much for watching. Through that. I think we should keep this as simple as possible, I think. The option two is. Okay. I'll go over this, yeah.
Cancer. I, I, no question. That's all right.
No questions.
That's what we're.
Ron, what would be the impact of volume two? You can illustrate potentially for us this for directly.
Sure.
And we can do it together, but.
Sure. So right now, right now, the code provides. A driveway with a slope greater than five percent. Does not have to be made of permeable materials. Because it's understood that stormwater will not be captured. So, the question. Came up. Well, what if the construction project results in the increase of the grade? From the pre-construction grade, should we require an applicant? To get a variance from our permeable driveway requirement? That was version one. If a construction project involves. The alteration of the grade to make it five percent. Then a variance would be required, an applicant would have to explain, why do you have to slope the grade like that, instead of keeping it? Under five percent, so you can have current regard.
Um, under the assumption that they might be doing that in order to. Skirt around the requirement for permeable driveway about five.
Right.
Below five percent. For the best.
Right, uh, yeah, one potential loophole. And so. Option two. Would avoid the need. For that applicant to request a waiver. And instead impose on that applicant a requirement. To calculate the amount of runoff that would have been captured if the driveway remained. At its pre-construction grade and permeable materials were used.
Got it, and so, so for example, if in the pre-construction. It was le- less than five percent.
Right. Yes.
It was four percent. The grade, and now post-construction is six percent. We would want to know. What?
We would want to see. A stormwater drainage plan. That reflected. Our, our four percent.
I assume it was four and a half percent.
Right. Our four and a half percent driveway, if made of permeable materials. Would capture, treat and retain a hundred and twenty cubic feet. Of, of volume of water. Our post-construction driveway is six percent, it's not going to capture anything, so. In order to capture that. One twenty. Give it, is that what I said, one twenty? We're, we're doing something else. We're putting in a level spreader and taking the water from the driveway and making it infiltrate into the front lawn, or what have you, or a rain garden, of course.
So the effective calculation. Includes now roof and. Driveway runoff.
Correct, yeah, the stormwater drainage plan would show, here's what we're doing with the downspouts, and here's what we're doing with our six percent driveway. Right, it, it's, it's conditional. You have any other questions?
That's good.
Thank you. As her wrote back, do you have any questions?
I don't.
Okay, thank you, I will now turn it over to any singers. There was a president. Thank you. What, what, if any, you want to introduce her?
So this is just introduction that I am comfortable. Moving forward with introducing option two. Which. Probably impacts very few construction projects. But for those who, it does impact, it seems to make sense to me, and we can discuss the details next week, but I think it's. Worth introducing and starting that clock tonight.
Yeah, right, option two gives them a way out, um, without going through the variance process, which is contentious and difficult, so.
I agree, I mean. I'm, I, it's okay to, to, to put this on me.
Really, I'm just wondering, the scenario where it's a minor grade change. Like, it was four and a half percent or five percent. You know what I mean, that, that, minor stuff would fall under this too, right?
Yeah, they don't have much water, so.
It should be fine to calculate and apply that. But it's a surface area, right, it's not the flow of the water, it's the full surface area of the driveway.
It's. It's, if this is, I'm sorry, go ahead, cancel. It's whatever would have been captured under the old driveway, if the old driveway would.
But the surface of that driver, it's the full surface area of that driver. So it's, so it's not, it's not the slope, it's not what water. How water is treated by the slope, but the full surface area of the driver, correct?
Yeah, well, the first ten feet are not included, but yes, in principle, yeah. And it's not a one for one calculation. You know, consider the surface area of the driveway and say you're. You drive, driveway has a square. Foot area of X, therefore you need to capture X cubic. Feet of stormwater volume. Our stormwater engineer will calculate, using the curb number for the permeable pavers, how much rainwater actually is infiltrated. To come up with a. A volume metric measurement.
Exactly, like. The dry wells that are installed. Roughly capturing half the volume in water, because the other half is solid.
And some is going to run off. Even one percent slope. And.
If it becomes too difficult for a. Builder to come up with a solution that. Conforms this code and, and treats that. Water, additional water runoff that's created or whatever. Um. Then they can request a waiver, but, but we, we, we create a path for.
That's a good point, maybe, I mean, we, we move forward with work, but we have an engineer give us. Kind of a framework at the next working session.
Yes. I did speak to Matt and Matt's plan was to ask Chris Sepp to take a look at this if introduced and.
That would be great, that would be helpful, so we, we. I'm, I'm always worried about. You know, all policy has unintended consequences and. We cannot see them all. And we see the ones that are, the ones that are easy for us to grab, so.
Shannon?
Um, I don't have any questions.
So it sounds like you're prepared to make a much improved do something, so. I'm, we introduce a code amendment, option number two, upon stormwater drainage requirements required from the driveway installation. Hearing that on this paper. Okay, thank you, so. Do you like to write an article in the journal on this one?
Yes.
Next, I, to consider introduction of a code amendment establishing building height requirement for main buildings.
Yes, this is the work session, this is a kind of an establishing. Building environment support in buildings.
Okay, Mr.. Mr. Council President.
Oh, did you want to start? To add to that, Mr. Mayor, so council member Barr. Prior to the work session noted one change that should be made, mayor should be changed to council with respect to who can. Issue the approval, I made that change. But it looks like the old version is still in the.
Right.
The drive. Just wanted to point that out.
Is everybody understands, right? I have no questions. Councillor Barr. Right, but something we're voting on, new version, which we cannot see at the moment, but all right, the only change is that, which made Mary. We'll get insurance for this.
I have two questions. And so, yeah, Ron, I think that at the work session. You know, there were a couple of questions. One was, how do we allow like thirty three feet uncomfortable with the foundations of that? I think we were supposed to get after the work session. You know, a better rationale for that, which I don't believe you thought. Second is. That, you know, we don't have. There's been these. Parts we've had, and it sounded non, kind of correctional, but this idea that every street is different potentially and. What's the implication of this on, on, of how we think about the, I think it was Shannon brought that up, how do we think about the differences? I don't think we are reflecting that, you know. And I, I, I don't know how we would, but I, I, we are not reflecting that here. Um, and so I, I'm, I'm. As I was saying at the work session, I think we need to establish. A height. I think we need that framework, but. I think this is, has huge implications for future construction. And I think that it may also give. Residents some, you know, sort of. Constellation around what this means for the existing home, so I, I would like this to. Maybe require one more round of research and justification. Before we trigger it for my own comfort level, obviously, you guys can move forward with it, but I, I would prefer to. Get comfortable with why we're taking the high level with, anyway.
Sorry, before you, before you said, babe. Do you have any questions? Do you have any specific questions to the town attorney?
Yeah, how do we establish, you know, we, we had asked for sort of a. Further clarification on the, on the high requirement. Threshold. On how we came to it, because I think the response to the work session was, oh, that's what it was in Martin's edition. Or we looked at a sampling of homes. Admittedly, I felt we, we could go a little further, we may end up at the same place. Frankly, but. Given the implications of this, I would want us to be a little bit more robust. And how we go about it, and so. Just kind of reminding us how we arrived at that, I guess it's my question.
So, yeah, my instructions were to prepare an ordinance modeled after the Martin's Editions ordinance, which is what I did, so as you said. This is. A potential adoption of the standard that. Martin's Editions found appropriate, however. Staff did provide. The report reflecting, I think it was six homes. And I recall the discussion. I apologize, I don't recall whether there was a resolution as to whether further homes should be studied by. My town staff or not, do you recall that again?
The town manager, uh. Has said that if council wishes for a townwide survey, survey of building heights, that can be done, but it will, uh, between now and next month.
Just one more left. For a town like so really. I would, I mean, so we can come back and discussion, but I would offer that that would be.
Yes, you can use that as your argument against introducing this. But did you, so there's, do you have any other questions?
Yes, and the, the issue, maybe Shannon will bring, let me, I'll let Shannon ask this question, but Shannon and I brought up this, so what does this mean? Street by street, how are we thinking, has there been enough further thinking on that by the town staff? The, the idea that not all streets. May require the same threshold, I understand it's hard to practically implement that. But I love to know if there's been any thinking on that.
So if I just wanted to explain how the, this code, as I understand it, does just that, because it re. The allowable building height is very low according to the street that you're building.
Right, so as written. There would be a max height of thirty three feet. Measured to the highest point of roof surface or twenty eight feet measured to the knee. But. The council could grant an additional up to two feet. On both of those measurements. Based on the established building height of. Houses on the street.
So, um, so.
Okay, councillor, right back, your turn.
So, so is the Montgomery County. Restriction thirty five feet?
Yes.
And, um, I think that, you know, the manager's report really said that there was just maybe one, potentially one house that. Would have been triggered by this, I think, um, Kabir.
Okay.
I, I think it was just the one on the corner of Wisconsin and Cumberland, like it had some sort of something that was a little too high. Um. And then. So if you were to put. A second story on. You know, one of the houses on, um. On the, on one of the streets that has more of the, um, mid-century modern houses. You couldn't put a third story on there and still be under thirty three feet. Is that what you guys understand?
Well, you asked the town attorney.
Well, I mean, I'm asking, I guess, everyone, if anyone knows.
May, maybe Doug has some experience.
I can, I can speak to ours. Mid-century one, we added another, I think our height is twenty five feet.
Yours is twenty five?
Twenty five feet, not including the chimney height, which is, but to the roof line is twenty five feet. I can't imagine we could add. Another level that. And then it wouldn't run in violation of this, right?
Right.
Formatically.
Yeah, so I think that.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, Kabir, so I feel like that does kind of limit then the neighbor, you know, like if, if someone can put just one level on top of. Those houses.
Yeah.
That, that kind of helps solves like that in a way, so you don't have a huge gigantic high house next to. You know, a, a one story. Um. So I think it does kind of solve for that a bit.
Okay, do you have any other questions?
No, I have no other.
Before, before, oh, sorry, the, you, on that point, so before we, I got a second round. So I, I do want to, um. Uh, ask the town attorney, so, so, because councillor Kuar mentioned something about, um. Exist, how does it affect existing buildings, I assume their grandfather did. So with respect to existing buildings, they'd be developmental non-conformities, which are. Structures that were lawful when built, but rendered non-conforming as a result of a code change. Obviously, they don't need to be torn down, reduced in size, developmental non-conformities are allowed. To remain. If they were ever torn down and replaced, the replacement would need to conform. To the code unless. The new code, unless the council were to add a grandfathering provision that allowed in kind of replacement as well. So, so is that clear up here? That helps, okay, so the other thing, another dimension that, so let's say somebody, uh. Just goes in your house right now and then it burns down. So. Could, would, would, you know, like, next year, would there, would there be a way to write in there? You, 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 council can grant a variant of certain conditions.
Yes.
Cause that might be, you know. With climate change, who knows what they have. And so you wouldn't really want to paddle away somebody. That, that. Just build a house right before we change this, that, that your house burned there. So. That you won't, I'm sorry, but I'm going to go on to say, do you have any other questions? Councillor Barr, you have any questions?
I do have a question, um. How, when we make a height, we, we, let's say we do this, you know, just like Martin's Edition did, it was thirty five. Thirty three feet, whatever. So with what's coming our way in development. With thrive twenty fifty and the ZTAs are going to come our way where they're going to allow. Developers to come in and, you know, do multi-story, um, you know, uh, dwellings. Do they have to? Even though the county may have changed the co, the zoning. To allow for this, will they have to conform to our height? Um, requirements.
So an applicant will have to comply with both county and town requirements. I would. Well, I've, I've written. Some information that I'd like to share with the council and. We're probably worth a discussion in closed session when we have. Little more time for legal advice, but I mean, in a nutshell, an applicant has to comply with, but. What the county will probably do. Under. Brian Montgomery is. Similar to what was done for accessory dwelling units. Implement zoning text amendments. That change the rules under special circumstances. Oh, they may say, for example, a multi-family dwelling may have additional height. Than thirty five foot height for a single family home in order to encourage.
May I suggest that you have kind of close session. To walk through this scenario, you did submit a memo to others. And I think we should, it, it was in the working session.
Okay.
Okay, well, does that need to be decided right?
No, it doesn't need to decide right now, but we should have a, okay.
No, that was my question.
I appreciate that, that was a question on my mind, I do think it is important for us to have full sense of that. Uh, because I think there are some, yeah, considerations that we should do a session on that, for sure. Uh, no, I think that my main question was maybe just to follow up EJ. Just to confirm, we are able to do it truly in a month's time. Uh, of, of combined survey.
Uh, the town manager stated that, um. It could definitely be started, he would have to, uh, work with them specifically to create a timeline, but he will use that. At least a good. Amount of it could be done.
Let me ask the county, let me, a quick follow up on that.
Let me just also add, so let's say, uh, so your question is at this time. Yeah, so let's say that can't be accomplished, then, then the legislation can be reintroduced. So that can be your.
That was a follow up question I had to be on, but I also wanted to ask Ron, does he recommend? That we do some form of a townwide. Survey, if, if under the foundations of this legislation, given your experience with other towns.
Sure, so I would say. Those municipalities. That first implemented the authority granted in two thousand and six. Did have. Studies done to help guide their decision-making, Chevy Chase Village hired. An architect. From Vermont. Town of Chevy Chase hired Chris Jakubiec.
Like the Vermont point significantly higher.
Oh, that gives him prestige. Sorry, that was the Italian. And. Town of Chevy Chase used Chris Jakubiec, an urban planner from Annapolis who hired on Studio Fifty Seven Architects, and they. Walked around the towns and. Took samples and prepared diagrams and that was very helpful and. You know, if legislation's ever challenged, it's nice to have that. Supporting material in the background, that said. The other communities have done it and. In certain instances, you can reasonably rely on that. And here we know the county standard is thirty five. And so if the council finds based on experience, thirty five is too much. I think you can also reasonably look at. A house that's thirty three and you, you all walk the neighborhood and, and have a general sense of. What's, what's compatible with respect to mass scope and design? Eh, eh, either way.
Quick follow up on that.
Yeah.
To get you to grow a line in the sand. The, we've had some legislative, I mean, uh. Uh, you know, some litigation. Uh, you know, so we are exposed to litigation. At least in my two years, we've had at least one, I'm on the second. Um, so I'm wondering, i- is it reasonable to say that having this process done and. Supported with a town-specific analysis would protect us from potential. Litigation. Not the act of litigation, but give us the ability to, to kind of counter it with more substance.
It would add protection, but as I said before, I'm, I'm not. Convinced we actually need that protection for. A two-foot reduction from the county standard in building height.
And we're also not neat that state other municipalities have got this code there already, so.
Right, and then these are compatible or comparable. Communities. I mean, that said. I did reach out to Janico, the manager of Chevy Chase View.
Yes.
Their town. Hired Chris Jakubiec in twenty fifteen. Who could provide a survey and I asked if she could share the cost. I have a copy of the contract, but not his, his cost scope of work readily available, so once I have that. I'll let you know what that was.
One quick last question, we don't say by external, we're saying leverage. To do this, okay, okay, thank you.
Councillor, right back, do you have any questions?
I don't.
Okay, hey, and now we'll turn it over to Mr. President.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, um. So I want to thank your county attorney for pulling together various thoughts and the town staff for doing some. Some background surveys, um, to help us understand municipalities. I'm ready to proceed with introducing this, I think this would be a topic of interest to the town. Perhaps I should make my article. A, a two per covering both, both topics of buildings. Um. This would be valuable to get some feedback from town before we make. A change that could start to impact. I mean. We know the size, scope, form, structure of. The buildings in the town even just slightly. Um. But I'm ready to introduce it and then we can discuss it further next month and then. If the majority of the council next month feels that we need more time, or just disagrees with the concept completely because of town input, then it'd be. Formative or. Or vote it down at that time, but. I'm in favor of introducing that since.
We have more than one month, right, you're sixty days. We have thirty days to adopt.
Sixty days before you need to reintroduce.
Yeah.
Just, just to clarify. Okay, my desire is to get this going as soon as we can, because even once. Assuming we vote on it. Doesn't that start another clock with the county before it becomes effective?
So with respect to building regulations, yes, we do need to share those with the county council and allow thirty days for county to comment. Before we have our hearing. And take action.
Go ahead, man.
So if you, if you introduce tonight, I would send it to the county just to start that clock. And I, I will add. The grandfathering provision as recommended by the mayor, which provides that in the event of a. Casualty loss of. Fifty percent or more. The. House, the non-conformity can be rebuilt. Us, standard language that casually that fifty percent or more, I know that's in the town Chevy Chase and Chevy Chase Village every week. Okay.
Like, then, then maybe there should be a time on that or. Or. Or restricted to the person that if. If, to make sure it's the same owner.
Maybe replaced. Because I mean, same owner within a.
Because I mean, you wouldn't want to be, you, you know, um.
I mean, you all have to decide.
Good point.
Anyway.
Probably.
Yeah, I, I'm happy to see it introduced now, um. We've had residents concerned about building like that now for a couple of years, um, and so. We're moving kind of late now already on, on their concerns, so moving along briskly is probably the right thing to do. Um. That, that's pretty much it, and they, they. Uh, it's not much of a change, it's.
I think we should introduce, I think we're ready to do that, it's a long process, it sounds like, but let's get going.
I'm comfortable introducing it under the condition that we see the building survey. Done for it to be adopted. And I'm assuming that's reasonable, because we know that it can be done by the.
If the survey is ready by next month, I'd enjoy working on it. I don't actually expect that capable of, it's my, my vote, one way or the other. So, I, I would, so, all I try to say is, if, if that survey is not complete. I do not believe that would mean we automatically postpone voting. On the, yeah.
Do we have to pay for a survey?
So, so that's a good question, because I, I think, I don't think the council has authorized the survey yet. And don't they need to today?
Pay for something?
Yeah, you would pay, you would pay Doug. And unless Doug's gonna do it for free, you on the line, Doug? But I mean, I think, I think that, but I think that it. I don't think it's in the budget.
We're, we're talking a couple of hours, so get some plans.
It's not in the budget as a line item. Yeah, but I think. But I believe it would probably fall in every envelope of the contingency line that. In the description of the town manager.
But yeah, let's ask, does, does the, uh, Mr. Attorney, does the tenant manager have the ability to. Perform that survey without, yes, the council approval, right? Well, the, the money has to have been appropriated. I'm not familiar enough with your budget to be able to offer an opinion as to whether there is a line item that he could pull from.
Yeah, yeah, and then you say a line item, that's pretty good. That, well, doubt this, so it will possibly.
But I was, uh, but I think, I still think the council would need to approve use of that contingency, because. It hasn't been appropriated for that specific.
And I also think that, uh, I wonder if it falls under procurement.
That's twenty K over.
And we're talking about. Yeah. It would be under an existing contract.
Okay, so I, I do think, I do think basically what you're saying, it would probably, um. It will do, there's no reason why the council couldn't approve that, that's.
No.
Not to see that way, Matt.
Yeah.
So is that, yes.
So, is that just to figure out how many houses are over that right now or something?
Yeah, well, I think when you, I think when you, whatever you're going to approve, you should be specific about what you want to do.
Yes.
Cause I.
Or is this the character?
I think there's, I think you all have a lot of questions. I, you know, I don't think you totally clarified exactly what it was, I think. You want to get certain information, so there's no reason why you shouldn't make that decision tonight. All right, so, do you agree, Mr. Derrick?
Yes, Mr. Derrick.
Might be beneficial.
So, Kabir, can you just define what you're looking for in this study? And we can see if that's something we're ready to.
Our current proposal is based on, uh, the height from Martin's addition. And I would like it to be based on a survey of, uh, towns' properties. Uh, it, it's like a meaningful sample, maybe thirty, forty percent, rather than six to seven. Properties, which is eleven, five percent of town properties. That gives us a good size, a good sense of the average height across all major cities, three different towns. And I suspect that we will come roughly to the same figure, whether we will be. We will sort of support a case in the face of any questions on this legislation.
And it may, Mr. Mayor, may be worth saying, we'd like to see X number of houses.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I. So, I, I'm happy to do, I, I mean, I'm open to that, I haven't thought about it, but I, you know. I, I at least thirty percent per street, thirty percent of houses per street would be.
Yeah, and if, if there are not building plans available, then someone's got to go out with a.
That's what I think this is.
A laser measure on the houses.
Okay, so if you, does the council want to vote on this, um, survey before you vote on whether you're interested?
So the survey would be to, let me re- re- establish the, the height, whether it's the. The, the highest point or the mean height that was used for the permit. Or, so we can understand where we stand today.
When you say permit, are you talking about the new houses that have been built?
All the houses in the town had permits at some point in time.
But we may not.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I mean, what, I don't know how many of our minds would be changed by the thoughtful survey is, is the issue, I don't, my mind would be changed. I'd also keep, if we're going to do the survey, keep it very specific, um, so I would say something like. Uh, only survey the tallest two homes on each street.
Right.
You know, so that it is. Good collecting the sample of the tallest forms at that point, um, which is probably what gives potential information.
Any falls in the town that we know of that are taller than thirty-five feet?
Yeah, but I, I think you want, you, you definitely want that covered, but I think to define it to be. A sensible study, I think you will not accept some threshold, like, you know, twenty percent, thirty percent of falls on every street. Would, is what comes to our mind, we can change the threshold, and we based on the permit data, I suspect we will get thirty percent of falls. Per street permit data, I, I have no surprise.
Do we, I, I guess what I'm sitting here thinking is, do I care? Because what I'm trying to do now.
I definitely think.
Standard.
Yeah.
Makes sense for this community, and if, you know, so many percents are taller than we would want, well, so be it. Let's just bring it down for the new, new building then, because we're not comfortable with having such big houses.
No, I think we will, we will know that, that's all I'm saying, we, we can so propose with the limit, but we would have done a survey. And would have been based on our understanding of what it is in our town versus what is in Martin's addition, which is, you know. I think our town will thank us for going out and doing a survey and understanding what the, what the height coverage is. Arguably, I mean, it would be nice per street, I'd be happy to do townwide at a certain percentage, but if it's per street, that would be great. That would be my thinking, Ron, how is that? What comes to your mind on what could be the building blocks of that survey?
I mean, I, thirty percent on each street seems reasonable to me, but I do question whether. Permits are actually available, plans are actually available.
Okay.
I think it's probably going to require a lot of. Site visiting and, and measuring from the streets, and I don't know how much time that's going to take.
You don't think we have permit for?
Well, I explained to that question. Would you go upstairs? Yeah, would you be able to find a permit from when I renovated my house in nineteen, in, in, in nineteen ninety-nine, I think?
I think we have that, guys, I, I, I think it would be fine. I, I don't think having for a meaningful share.
Meaningful share.
And I think.
So is this, so is this a more of a clerical job to begin with? Or is this Doug going house to house? If you open, if you go through every house's file and you pull out, you know, our permits or whatever. Maybe this is more of a clerical job.
It's up to Doug to decide if he wants to go out or if he wants to use, I would use the data we have. Uh, we the shortest, yeah.
But can we see where we are, I mean, that, let's, can we take a vote on how many of us want this survey to be appropriate and spend money on this survey? That's what it also.
Well, this, 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 I'll make a motion that this survey. May authorize a survey. I'm happy.
May, maybe, maybe we can.
Yeah, go ahead and make a motion on the survey. So, uh, motion to conduct a townwide survey of building height. Uh, to inform, uh, potential court amendment to establish, establish a building height requirement for main buildings. Uh, the survey to cover thirty percent of homes per street in the town and to be completed. Uh, within a small.
That's again, and you should put it down, not to exceed.
Not to exceed twenty, not to exceed ten thousand dollars, yeah, in total cost.
Okay, you said.
I don't think it will cost even that.
Okay.
Answer it, and that the money is.
On the contingency. Yeah, to, to remain available for the survey from you, previously approved contingency part of this facility.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll, I'll second that, that's a discussion.
Um, well, we were just discussing it.
I know, but I have a question.
Yeah.
A cool question, Ron, do you think we should do this study? But what's your legal opinion? Do you think we should do this study?
Well, I'd like to give that to you, I'd like to give the answer to you in closed session.
Okay.
Similar to the.
We can go in close session.
Uh, that's a thought, do you recommend we go into closed session at this point, as, as we discussed this topic?
Yes.
Okay, okay, is there a question? So, I'm moving to go into closed session, we have to give the reasons, so it's for like legal advice.
To obtain legal advice. Motion to enter closed session pursuant to three through five B, I'm sorry, three through five. Seven, to obtain legal advice on a legal matter, namely. Potential amendments to the bill in Kansas.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, we are serious, sir. I second it.
I mean, you introduce, sir.
He introduced it, I second.
I'm just here to discuss.
You're an anonymous paper. Thank you, sir.
Oh, you're great, because we're going, sorry.
Sorry about that.
You can come back in ten minutes.
Oh, no, I, I just want to, I'm, I'm, I'm busy, I'm bored. So I'm gonna be here next week, I mean, next month, and so I just wanted to have a video of.
Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you.
Your big dream is that, that we have the sign sheet. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We're going to be at a closed session if you want to come back.
Oh, no, it's a legitimate. Everyone except for you.
I'm ready, I'll, let me check.
And turn the recording session. Welcome back.
We are back in an open session, and, um, is there, uh, did council? I made a most. What I'd like to do is make a friendly amendment to the motion that we. We direct the, the town staff, town engineer to, to get this survey to maximum extent applicable. I don't want to.
Agree.
Set thirty percent or eighty percent or whatever, because each street will be different, the records will be different, but let's get as much information as we can.
I'm comfortable with that, we just. I'm, you understand that amendment.
Not to exceed ten thousand dollars, and.
So, okay, so do you accept, do you accept this friendly amendment?
I accept the friendly amendment to remove the thirty percent and replace it with maximal, for maximum extent applicable.
Okay, do you, is there a reason with the motions, sir?
I think so.
Okay. Is there further discussion? Always. Uh, okay, thank you. Excellent, okay, now are you going to, uh, introduce your amendment?
So. Oh, and, and, and I, I, in the interim drafted the additional language on grandfathering. So I could read that now, and it can be included in the introductory draft.
Is, is someone prepared to introduce the, um?
No, I'd like to introduce it, I think I'm now more flexible to extend in an extra month.
Okay, so you're introducing it with this.
Yeah, I have a question, I'll read it.
Yeah, just please.
So currently. Section D two provides town grandfathering created, any building existing on November twenty-eight, nineteen ninety-four. In which was law- lawfully constructed, may be extended to the rear. Provided that the extension is no closer to the side property line in the existing building, exploding permissible projections. And the extension otherwise complies with this article, except as provided in the previous sentence. New construction or in addition to an existing building must comply with this article. So it's that last sentence that will modify, because right now, if the house burns down, it can't be rebuilt. So we would add, except as provided in the previous sentence, and except as stated in new paragraph three below. Buildings existing prior to blank twenty-twenty-three, that date will be the date of introduction of this ordinance. Notwithstanding any provision of the contrary contained above, a building existing prior to that date. That sustains a total, total physical loss or substantial physical loss, fifty percent or more. Due to accidental causes, including but not limited to fire, storm, falling trees, flooding, natural disaster, acts of war, terrorism, may be rebuilt, provided. The replacement building does not encroach any farther into any setback. The footprint is not larger than the previous footprint, and the height does not exceed the height of the prior building that was lost.
Okay, so that's the amendment, the kind of, is there a second? Is there a second? Here and now, I'll listen here. Uh, okay, so now it's introduced, and who is, who wants to write it?
So, I mean, I'll, I'll write one article. But I might separate it, just so people, I would, but I'll, 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 so I'll write a few articles, I can trace me.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Okay, and our final, uh, item is the manager's report. And did you, did you have anything to add? Council President, sir, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Council member, bar.
No questions.
Those are all.
No question.
Those are a couple of, none, thank you, what? Council member, throwback. Any questions?
No questions.
Okay, and if you do have any, of course, matter with that, I think by Thursday, so please.
I was gonna say, I'm gonna text my.
Okay, we got your motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Great meeting.
EJ did a great job.